This is a regular city council meeting of the City of Ocean Shores. It is May 27, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. The meeting is being held at the Ocean Shores Convention Center. The meetings are simulcast and archived on KOSW Radio. Meetings are live streamed with closed captioning and may be accessed on the city website under Council Recordings. The meetings can be viewed on cable channel 68 Thursdays at 12:00 PM and Sundays at 10:00 AM. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sires?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Gribble?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wills?
Here.
Councilmember Hardman?
Here.
All right, thank you. Rich, could you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance? All right, can we get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item four to item number three.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Council, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we have no ceremonies or proclamations. Board committee vacancies, there's three vacancies on the park board, two vacancies on the library board of trustees, one vacancy on the lodging tax advisory committee, one vacancy on the airport development and operating committee. I would like to appoint Pam Notchbor to the library board of trustees with council consensus. All right, thank you. Hope I said that name right. All right, so we're going to go with four firsts on the reports. So could the Port of Grace Harbor come on up and give their annual report?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us. My name is Kayla Dunlap. I'm the Director of Government and Public Affairs at the Port of Grace Harbor. And with me this evening is Commissioner Stan Pinnick, representing you all here in the 3rd District, and our Executive Director Leonard Barnes. So as part of our outreach, we go to every city and elected board in the county and just give you an update about what's been happening at the port over the past year. Give you an opportunity to ask questions of us. So without further ado, I'll buzz through this and if there's anything I don't mention, by all means, feel free to ask. Okay, so just some port review here. Ports were formed in the state of Washington with passage of the Port Act in 1911. We are the second oldest port district in the state, just a few months behind the Port of Seattle. Our governance, we have three port commissioners, so we are a countywide port district. Their district lines mirror those of the county commissioners. On the left is Tom Quigg, representing the 2nd District, so the cities of Aberdeen and Westport. In the center, of course, is Commissioner Pinnick, representing the 3rd District, Ocean Shores, Hoquim and Cosmopolis. And then on the right, Commissioner Phil Papik, representing the 1st District, are East County Cities of Montesano, Elma, McClary and Oakville. So these gentlemen are elected by the voters of the county. One of them is up for reelection every two years. Commissioner Papik will be running unopposed in 2025. And then they hire an executive director. Leonard may be new to the executive director position, but he is very much not new to the port. He's been with the port for more than 40 years. So an exceptional person to be leading us at this very important time. Go ahead, next slide. Just a review of our mission statement. I don't expect you to really care about this, but in essence, those three bolded terms are what we do. And we very much do care. This is what guides us every day in the work we do. So how we fulfill our mission, international trade, economic development and tourism. Economic development is actually the one thing every single port district in the state of Washington is charged with, and the RCWs. So whether you're the Port of Seattle with over a million people in your port district, a rural countywide port district like us, or little port of Othello over in eastern Washington, economic development is the one thing we're trying to do. So how we fulfill that mission is through our lines of business, of which we have seven. Go ahead and go to the next slide, thank you. So I'm going to walk through each of these with you. We have one line of business that is very unique to our port. We're the only port district in the state that actually employs our pilots, and I'll cover that here in a moment. But otherwise, these should look familiar to you. They've all been a line of business since, the newest one was 2014. Go ahead. Starting with the airport. So Bowerman Airport is a 5,000-foot jet-capable runway out in west Hoquim. General aviation remains the main use at this time. Recently, well, about two years ago now, actually, Liflight took up operations out there, and they are just finishing, I'm looking to Leonard for confirmation, their hangar. They invested about $1.3 million in their own helicopter hangar out there. And they extended their lease as part of that deal as well. So they're going to be a long-term partner here in Grace Harbor, which is very great for our community. And then, of course, we do see a good use of military trainings out there, as well as them using our fuel services. So that's kind of what's happening at the airport recently. Next slide. Our industrial properties. So we're still sitting right around 120 tenants between our main industrial properties in Aberdeen and Hoquim. Our tenants still do a pretty wide variety of things. There's a couple of examples up there that I know are probably very familiar to folks. LG Isaacson, Isaacson Brothers, a very long-term tenant at the port. Harbor Saw and Supply. Some other cool things that a lot of folks might not know is there's products like Paperstone, manufactured by Paneltech over in Hoquim. It goes all around the world, Canada, Europe. So they're taking recycled paper and resins and heating and compressing it to their Paperstone product, which has many, many applications going all over. And then, of course, right across the street from our main office is a company called Hesco, and they're manufacturing a very lightweight, bulletproof plate that goes in the vests of military and law enforcement all over the world, too. So just some really neat hidden gems. We're always looking to add to that mix. Next slide, thank you. So the Westport Marina, there is a lot going on with the Marina, and there will be a lot going on for the foreseeable future. So the Marina remains the number-one commercial seafood landing port in the state, currently ranking number 12 in the nation for both volume and value of seafood landed, which is pretty impressive, given their size of their community. And that is in large part thanks to the five major seafood processors we see out there. What you're looking at there is a configuration of about 550 slips. That will be changing over the next decade or so as we embark on the Marina modernization project. So essentially, all of the floating dock infrastructure you see there will be rehabilitated, reconstructed and reconfigured over the next decade. Very large project. We will go about it in a very strategic way, as this is very much a working waterfront, and it is also a very expensive project. No other line of business quite showcases those three parts of our mission like the Marina. I'm not sure if I have a slide, go ahead and go to the next slide. Yes, I do. So Westport landed seafood is exported to more than 85 countries around the world. So again, rather significant. We want to make sure we have the infrastructure to support that for generations to come. And go ahead and go to the next slide. Yeah, so just again, a little bit more about the Marina modernization project. This has been underway for about four or five years now. We've done a couple of studies, did a lot of talking to our users about what they're going to need for the foreseeable future. And there's some great illustrations, actually, on this photo. Much like commercial shipping, the commercial fishing vessels are getting wider and longer, and that configuration was done about 40 to 60 years ago, and it does not support those vessels anymore. So we want to make sure those vessels can get in to the docks and get their seafood offloaded there. So we are, there's actually three phases currently, and this first phase will have four pieces to it, believe it or not. So we are hoping to hear in the next few months or so if we will be receiving an EDA grant to go get float 21 and 19 done. And there's also a recreation component to that. We received some state dollars, as that is the float closest to the boat launch. So many, many users out here, commercial, tribal and recreational fishermen. So we're excited to embark on that. And this is a business park. So the park became a business line for us on January 1st of 2013. There is a lot of big stuff up there. And when I say stuff, I mean a lot of unique infrastructure that will likely serve the park well in the future as we talk about clean energy. So 1,800 acres total. About 1,200 acres of that is forest land that we partner with Grace Harbor Community College. Both their two and their four-year programs are based up at the park, and they use it as a working classroom. And then the Grace Harbor College Commercial Driver's License Program also operates up there. We have the two largest buildings in the county, actually three, because I think the cannabis producer is considered the third. An abundance of water rights, redundant power, both the BPA line and the PD substation come in there. So again, clean energies, there's a lot of talk about that right now. We've been looked at for green hydrogen, which is still very much an emerging industry, but I imagine we will be having more conversations about that in the future. I think I touched on most of this, but I will take a moment to point out that that big warehouse you see there, the second-largest building in the county, is about a 256,000-square-foot warehouse where Lynch Creek Farm, which may sound familiar, they make holiday wreaths and tabletop greenery. Maybe you've seen a fundraiser, a local fundraiser for them. They have grown quite a bit at the park. They also have operations in Shelton. They were employing about 250 people this last busy peak season. So when our team toured the facility in December, it was incredibly busy. See the FedEx trucks pictured there? They were filling up one of those an hour to go out for delivery, which is really impressive. So we're excited to have them and look forward to their growth. And I, oh, I did have a slide. So that's just an illustration of the partnerships with the college. I think I have one more slide that's worth noting. Yes, our Tri-A Trade Event, so this was held last fall. And I know Alyssa and her team are already busy planning for the 2025 event. So we had over 1,100 students from five counties come up and have a hands-on experience with more than 20 trade organizations and unions. So it was a really neat event, and we were really proud to be a part of that and look forward to making that even more successful next year. Next slide. Friends Landing, so technically our newest line of business, but providing waterfront and recreational access is not something new to the port and our commissioners. It's been a goal of theirs for a very long time, but it has RV and tent camping facilities, hence the revenue source, so that's why it's a line of business. But if you haven't had a chance to make it out to Friends Landing, I encourage you to do so. It's a pretty neat little spot. Between the camping playground, we're putting in a pickleball court this year. We'll be making some improvements to the boat launch area, both the parking lot and the launch itself over the next several years, and that's actually right off this photo. So if you haven't been there, feel free to go check it out. Just some other examples of our public facilities, 28th Street Boat Launch and Landing in Hoquim, several out in Westport, obviously Fisherman's Boardwalk pictured there and the lighthouse on the right. And then the one in the center is probably a little lesser-known, that is Sterling Landing out on the Wenichi River. It is completely undeveloped and very highly used, both in summer and by our fishermen. And we heard very strongly from them that they want to maintain that access. So we are working to make some improvements to keep it safe and accessible for everyone. Next slide. All right. So we tend to save these last two for the end, because they are by far our largest lines of business, as demonstrated here with this graph. So that's our operating revenue, you see in the blue. The red line is our pilotage services and marine terminals combined. So roughly 80% of our operating revenue is generated by those two lines of business. Next slide. And just as a reminder, we operate four deepwater terminals with five berths. Terminal 3 is out in west Hoquim near Bowerman. If you go one more slide, I do have it. Great. So this is Terminal 3. You can see Hoquim High School there in the background, highway going out to Ocean Shores as well. So Woodless Enterprises currently exports wood chips here. They had a record year last year, by a long shot, and so far this year, they are on track to beat that record again, which is pretty cool. And then, have you heard recently about the wood pellet manufacturing facility? If you want to go back one slide, there you go. Approximately about where that box is, is where that facility is looking to locate, and they hope to have word here in the next couple of months that that's going to be possible, and shovels in the ground by Q3. About that, yeah. So that is about 55, 60 long-term jobs and about a $250 million investment in the city of Hoquim. I'm going to go back one slide. Perfect, thank you. So moving up the river, Terminal 1 continues to be a dedicated liquid bulk terminal. I did bring this, I'm not sure, yeah, I don't know if it'll work that far. So this is Terminal 1 right here. Currently utilized by REG Grace Harbor and the Silver Tanks, still manufacturing biodiesel there. And then in the white tanks is a company called BWC Terminals. Methanol is in three of the four tanks, and a product called MDI is in another. It's like an industrial strength Gorilla Glue. And then, of course, this is an outdated photo, and we can know that because there are now 12 silos and have been for about a year and a half. So Terminal 2 is AGP's storage and export facility. They are doing about 3 million metric tons of soy meal at that facility, which is about their capacity. So just again, it's soy meal, not whole beans. And their main markets are Southeast Asia. Philippines is the number-one country, Thailand, Vietnam, Indonesia, so Southeast Asia. If we went out there today, there's one thing you wouldn't see right now, and that is whole logs. We are not currently handling whole logs, partially by design, as the expansion project kicked off, and we knew it was going to be very difficult to do that. And then, of course, that came to an abrupt halt with tariffs. They had been going into containers to be exported up at the Port of Tacoma for a while. What you would see out there is a lot of autos. So we are importing autos, as opposed to about 10 years ago when we were exporting. So these are manufactured in South Korea, coming into our port to be distributed by both rail and truck. And then, of course, I'll just point out before we talk about the expansion, this is Terminal 4, the largest of the four, and you'll notice there are two berths here. Two slides ahead, if you could. Awesome, thank you. So just a reminder, we have been a couple decades now into the diversification of the cargoes we're handling, so it's not just all logs or wood products, although that remains an important piece of what we do. A variety of liquid bulks, whether it's feedstock canola oil coming in for biodiesel. Byproduct of making biodiesel is glycerin that was being exported for a while, too. And then, of course, the MDI and the methanol over at BWC Terminals. The number-one product we handle is soy meal. You're going to see, there's a lot of autos out there right now. Wood chips at T3 continue to be at a record pace, and then, as I mentioned, we had been putting logs into containers for export. Awesome. So this expansion is underway. We broke ground in November, and it is a very, very busy site out there. If you get an opportunity, please come see it while it's happening. I think you'll be amazed. So as a reminder, this is a public-private partnership. EGP, who's been in operations at T2 since the end of 2003, came to the port and said, "We want to put a second export facility here at T4B." They're investing about $170 million into their dump house and the new ship loader, which will be vastly different than the one at T2. To support that, the port had to, we're going to have to invest about $60 million to essentially three components of this project, the largest of which is the rail. So all of the green you see on that will be a new rail or an extension of existing rail. It's about 47,000 feet of rail. Pretty impressive. Second piece, T4 is the longest, and it's also the oldest of our terminals, so we will be putting in a brand-new fender system, as well as a stormwater collection and treatment facility. And then, right next door here, this was where the pontoons for the 520 floating bridge were constructed, from about 2000, gosh, when was it, 2012 to 2015. The port acquired the site at the end of 2018, and unfortunately, it's just been sitting, not doing a lot, except when Leonard gets really creative and parks cars there, mostly because there is about a 20-acre hole in the middle of it. So we will be securing the gate and filling the basin to create about 50 acres of cargo laydown area, so we can continue to handle things like the autos, logs, military equipment, over high, over wide equipment here at Terminal 4A. So that in a nutshell is the expansion project. We will be offering public tours in June, July and August, so we'd love to have you guys out and show you what's happening, because it's happening really fast. This basin is getting filled in as we speak, and the improvements over here are happening very fast as well. But we're very, very excited. That's just an illustration of the new AGP's facility. Brand-new, very different ship loader. It'll be twice the size of their dump house at T2, much more efficient operation. Just an illustration there. And of course, the impact. So this is going to create 80 long-term family wage jobs, the majority of which are going to be longshore jobs. There will be obviously some waterside and rail jobs created as well. I mentioned AGP's level of investment, and that's probably a very conservative number. We're easily going to be doubling our exports of soy meal. So if we're doing about 3 million metric tons at T2, it's going to be three to four, easy. And what's really driving all this is the demand for renewable fuels. So they're not crushing soybeans for the meal, they're crushing it for the soybean oil, which is one of the most valued feedstocks for creating renewable fuels. The meal, or the protein, is a co-product of that, which is still highly valued, and we can only consume so much domestically or even send to Canada or Mexico. So finding an outlet for that, it was really important to AGP. And then, I mentioned, it goes to Southeast Asia, it is part of the food system. So many of these countries are still developing, they're still trying to get more protein in their diets, so it's going to feed aquaculture, chicken, pigs, cows in some cases, and then they are then consumed by their people. So part of the food chain. Next slide. Last but definitely not least, we wouldn't have this line of business if we didn't have our marine terminals, but we are the only port in the state of Washington that directly employs our pilots. So they are licensed by the Washington State Board of Pilotage, but direct employees at the port, just like Leonard and I. So we currently have three full-time pilots right now. The gentleman you see there on your left is our senior pilot, and he is actually going to be facing mandatory retirement next year, next November, due to his age. So for seeing that and our growth, we started training pilots up, and the two other gentlemen, Ryan Leo and Colby Gromschmidt, are almost, almost fully licensed, very close. So we're really excited to have them grow here in Grace Harbor. And I'm pretty sure I have one more slide. So we also have a new pilot trainee, who is a local Montesano resident, which is pretty cool. So he was first out of his class. He went up and tested, they test every couple of years at Puget Sound, and he chose to stay and train here in Grace Harbor. So we are really excited to have Ryan Campbell join us as our fourth pilot. And as you all know, I'm sure, Cora's, excuse me, a very important partner for us, and I know that, I believe the city has been in contact with them about the rehab of the North Jetty. So I just touched base with Gabby today, and really great news. There was a really great chunk of funding in the FY25 work plan. So they are on track to put that to bid here, probably in July or August, and choose a successful bidder by September 30th, and we could see the project get underway as early as November, December, and then it'll take place over probably three summers, is my understanding. So you guys probably knew that, I just wanted to update that. It's an important project for us as well. They're an important partner. With that, be happy to answer any questions after.
Do you have any questions? I guess we don't, but thank you very much.
No questions? Wow. Well, thank you guys for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
And if you ever do have questions, please feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have the Community Engagement Committee report, and that's going to be all the Community Engagement Committee members.
All right. There we go, thank you. All right, we are the Ocean Shores Community Engagement Committee. My name is Kim Nichols, one of the founding members, along with my colleagues here. We'll do introductions in just a second. Second slide, please. So good evening, thank you esteemed council members and our neighbors in attendance here tonight, and definitely a big thank you to Mayor Eldwin for bringing this committee together early last year. But first, we need to recognize someone very special, who's been instrumental in supporting the Community Engagement Committee, from reimbursing our expenses to helping us navigate various city ordinances and otherwise, and it just so happens it's her birthday. So would you join us all in singing "Happy Birthday" to our very own Sarah Logan? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sarah. Happy birthday to you. Thank you for everything you do, Sarah, we really appreciate you. So we believe in the power of teamwork, so let's go ahead and meet our team. As I said, my name is Kim Nichols.
Connie Clifford.
Kristin Hartman.
Debbie D.
And past Ocean Shores Community Engagement Committee members, also included PJ Furia and Diane Griss. They had to leave the committee for various reasons, but we certainly appreciated their service on behalf of the city. So what we believe, that our guiding principle is that we believe that a thriving and vibrant community needs the kind of events that our neighbors look forward to. So we chose to live by this, and when we plan new events or support events hosted by the city or otherwise. Next slide, please. So let's look back. 2024 kicked off with a request to help with the Super Bowl party at the Convention Center, and we were just still in our formative stages as a committee, but we were asked to jump in and help out, so several of the committee members were able to do that. And based on the community feedback, we figured out pretty quickly that this one was destined to become a yearly event for the community and something that the Community Engagement Committee would be proud to keep alive. So more on that in a bit. Next slide. So, planning for 2024, as a team, we meet typically monthly to go over past events, how did we do, kind of do a debrief, and then go over things that we've got planned, different logistics, and then also we brainstorm, you know, bring ideas. If we see something from another town or just hear about something cool, we bring it to the table and discuss it. So as such, early in 2024, we came to the decision pretty quickly that a market of some kind would some kind would be the perfect kind of event to tackle head on. So that is what we did and we made our top priority Ocean Shores City Market. Next slide. So Ocean Shores City Market opened for business on June 1st, 2024. We located at, we were donated property from Ron Lambert, the owner of Bennetts. So many of you who visited, we know a lot of the council members have been frequent flyers there, but Ron was kind enough to donate property that's right across from the Convention Center between the bank and the, and Aff Gallery Hot Dogs. And we also have to recognize Phil over at Aff Gallery for his patience in the parking logistics and all of that, but he's been a wonderful partner to the market as well. So a few milestones I want, we wanted to feature. Again, you know, we have a high visibility location, which has been great for our vendors. Our vendors pretty much always make money when they, when they work the market. We got a cargo trailer last year temporarily donated by Mr. Hartman, thank you very much, that kept us from having to schlep supplies back and forth and back and forth. We worked on getting our branding, so Sarah again helped with our logo and so shirts? Shirt, shirt, shirts. Signage, learning a lot about sign ordinances and being compliant in that regard. George at the Convention Center was really helpful there. We launched a Facebook page, so if you go to Facebook, Ocean Shores City Market, there we are, all the information you'll ever want. And then also, I'll have to take credit for this, I learned how to build a website, so it was kind of fun, it was kind of fun. So we now have the ocean shoresitymarket.com website and Ryan is now my co-conspirator and we'll, we'll update content regularly. We established online vendor applications and also electronic payment through Square. Want to give a big shout out to K O S W, especially Lon and Mike for giving us a lot of valuable airtime on their show, and even when we weren't there on the show, they were still hyping the market on Saturday mornings, so we want to give a big thanks to them. But most of all, we've developed some really valuable relationships with our vendors. We call them our family and of course, our visitors and their pets. Next slide. So what else did we get done last year? We launched the market, that was, that took up the lion's share of our energy last year. But we also were able to jump in and provide event support for Ocean Shore PD's National Night Out in August, which was a great time. We were able to secure food, coordinate the Dunk Tank and Bouncy House. Connie put together a scavenger hunt and we had prizes donated by local merchants. And we have also offered our services for National Night Out 2025, should the police department want to utilize us. Next slide. All right, so 2025, we started out of the gates strong. We sailed into the year with a new member, Debbie B's, and she brought the idea of having a soup herbal with a soup contest, raffle, games, and she led this effort. And we were thrilled to welcome over 150 guests to enjoy an afternoon of food, fun, and football. So again, many thanks to our local businesses, we could not have done it without their generosity. They provided raffle prizes. Our home chefs ended up creating some pretty awesome samplings for everyone. And then we want to recognize a local beloved photographer and woodworker, Skip Radcliffe. He actually, he actually crafted the coveted Golden Ladle plaque. And of course, very special thanks to George Lee and the Convention Center staff for helping us pull all of this together. So will there be a Super Bowl 2026? You bet. Okay, so what's in store for 2025? We are only a couple of weeks away from launching season two of Ocean Shores City Market. We went from small but mighty and it is now a Saturday must-do in Ocean Shores. We were able to procure a free permanent cargo trailer for all of the Ocean Shores Community Engagement Committee events, so thank you to the mayor for helping make that happen. Vendor recruiting in full swing, and we recruit continuously throughout the year. Connie has led that effort and I don't know how she does it, but we have as of this past weekend, 27 vendors, or 28, sorry, 28 vendors. We have pretty much almost every vendor from the first season stayed on with us and chose to be here for more dates, but we've also recruited a whole lot more, including three food vendors. So we're making strides and could not do without Connie's leadership on this. So opening day is June Saturday, of course, June 7th, 10 a.m., our usual place across from the Convention Center, and we'll be open every Saturday, not taking a break, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. through September 27th. So we hope to see a lot of familiar faces out there. So I probably can't see it too well, but this is just a list as of the time I drew this up, as far as all the different vendors we have. So we have everything from artisans to, like I said, food vendors, paper crafts, fabric, you name it. There's something for everyone, so we really encourage you to stop by on a Saturday when you're out and about. Last slide? Did we go ahead? Okay. So what's, what's happening in 2025 in addition to the market? We're currently working on a request from the city to explore some ideas for July 4th and one, our other newest member, Ryan Solomon, will be leading that effort. Some of us will be available to provide event support for Ocean Shores Pride in August. Again, we'll, we've made ourselves available to the Ocean Shores Police Department for National Night Out 2025. And what else can we come up with? We're always, we're always looking for ideas, so you can join us on Facebook at Ocean Shores Engaging Our Community. That's our site that's dedicated for the Community Engagement Committee, so if you have ideas, throw them out there, we're monitoring the pages all the time. We love hearing from the community, we have a lot of great suggestions at the market as far as increasing our signage, we've done that. That you wanted more food vendors, we've done that. So we are here for you as an extension of this community. I'm going to toss it to Connie because she has a special request. Oh, this is going to be real quick. We're looking for volunteers. If any of you would like to volunteer with us, you can either go to our Facebook page because we have an application on there, not yet, but we will, or at our website, or please feel free to call any of us, or just contact us any way you know how, because all five of us are more than willing to talk to you at any time. That's it. So again, we'll put in, we'll put something out on, on Facebook when we actually have the volunteer application ready. It's going to pretty much be similar to the city's application, but there are a few more requirements that we will need from vendors, given the specifics of this market, one being having to have a food handler's card, for instance, because we have free popcorn and this year, free coffee. So more to come on that, so watch Facebook again. And with that, any, what questions do you have?
That would be council questions. Do we have any council questions or comments?
Just a big thank you.
Yeah. I definitely want to thank everybody in this group, you guys have done a great job, and maybe a lot of people don't know this, but this committee was put together with a group of people that had very different political views. And they all seen a common goal and worked hard on it together, and just goes to show you that we may have different views on politics, but we can all work together for the common good for this city, and I thank you all for doing that very much.
All right, so next is Public Communication to Council. Public Communication to Council is intended for communication to the city council regarding general council business or policy, not on tonight's agenda. Address comments and questions to the city council body, not to an individual member or to a city staff. Please limit your comments to three minutes, we request that the comments be nice and respectful. This is not a question and answer time, and the council cannot engage in conversation with the public. No person may use a public comment period for the purpose of campaigning or advertising. The city council will begin the time once a citizen has started with their public comment. At two minutes, you will see a green light, followed by a yellow light indicating 30 seconds remain in the public comment period. The red light will notify the reader that the public comment time has ended. Order of public comments will be, first, individuals attending in person, second, individuals attending remotely. The general public comments, whether in person or remotely, will continue in the usual position on the agenda. The agenda items that will be removed will be addressed following the conclusion of all general comments. So who do we got up first?
All right, good evening, council. We have four public comments in the House on general issues and one online, and the first, Kurt Dooley, public restrooms.
Good evening, mayor, council, and citizens, I'm Kurt Dooley. Speaking today to encourage the future use of LTAC funds for the upkeep and potential remodel of the restrooms at the beach entrance on Chance Alamir. I understand the primary purpose of these funds is to put heads in beds to attract tourists and encourage overnight stays in Ocean Shores. Recently, I shared a post on Facebook expressing my belief that maintaining and improving these restrooms serves not only to attract visitors, but more importantly, to keep them coming back. One response to my post stood out. Nicole Koch, who along with her son founded the Jeeps for Clean Shores event, commented in support. Though Nicole doesn't live in Ocean Shores, she chose our city for her event because of our greatest asset, the ocean. Over the past four years, her event has brought thousands of visitors to town and contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars to our local economy. Nicole wrote, and I quote, "I would agree on the bathrooms. Ocean Shores needs a public restroom where guests can feel safe and not grossed out when needing to use the bathroom." Those public bathrooms at the Chance Alamir had half of the bathrooms locked and we had thousands of people heading to the beach to clean it. The bathrooms are not maintained very well, you don't feel safe using them, and if I had little kids, there's absolutely no way I would take a three-year-old into those bathrooms, they are disgusting. You are correct when you say that tourists will judge a beach location on its facilities, on if facilities are available and the condition of those facilities. I see the same comments and I am a guest to Ocean Shores. Ocean Shores wants to increase tourism, I agree, it's the things like clean, safe bathrooms that will make a difference." End quote. I personally, wholeheartedly agree. When the tourists can't use the public restrooms, they head into the local businesses where more often than not, they're told no. The entire situation's unacceptable. Remodeling and maintaining these restrooms to the highest standards is not only appropriate, but essential. Whether through LTAC funds or city funding, investing in quality public facilities is a smart, strategic move to support tourism and enhance visitor experience in Ocean Shores. We want longer stays and frequent returns, not angry frustrated tourists. In 2019, the city of Port Angeles used LTAC funds to construct three new public restrooms over a five-year period. In 2023, the city of Everett applied LTAC funds toward public restrooms. In 2024, the city of Port Angeles again voted to use LTAC funds for public restrooms. Also in 2024, the city of Vancouver encouraged applications for LTAC funds to include, among other things, public restrooms. That same year, the city of Langley voted to allocate $50,000 of LTAC funds toward public restrooms, even though they only collected $200,000 in lodging taxes.
That's a time.
Matt Buchanan, death to Scotch broom.
Hello, I am Matt Buchanan, RV lot owner, using my full 120 days this year. Yes, Scotch broom, we all know it, some people joke that's the city's official flower. Washington State classified Scotch broom as a Class B noxious weed requiring local control to eradicate it. I'm not sure if the city can do anything about this yellow menace, but it's out of control on a lot of the vacant lots. For example, look at a lot west of the post office, it's like 75% yellow. Same with the lot just north of Ace, including many of the empty lots in the south end of town. Before, it was all trimmed back along Highway 109, there used to be a constant blur of yellow and haze of pollen on the way into town. Not sure if anyone, the city can do anything about this, but can we get a save the sinuses ordinance about this horrible invasive weed? Something that requires landowners to come out and cut this thing down on a regular basis. The only downside to summers out here is the pollen cloud that kicks up from the fields of yellow. The longer this sits unresolved, the worse it's just going to become. Thank you.
Jane Shattuck, positive outcomes since the shelter transition.
Too tall. Jane Shattuck, Ocean Shores resident. Good evening, mayor, council members, and community members. At the most recent council chat, I was asked by a council member how operations have been going at the shelter since the transition. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council once again for your vote in favor of the agreement with the Salty Dog Animal Rescue and to share what a meaningful and positive impact that decision has already had. In less than two months, the collaboration between the city and the Salty Dog Animal Rescue has significantly improved outcomes for the dogs that come into the shelter. Every dog brought in so far has been reunited with their owner within a very short time and sometimes within minutes of their arriving, thanks to the dedicated volunteers who are able to act quickly using multiple platforms and to spread the word and post photos of lost pets. But perhaps the most important success in the very heart of this agreement was when a dog was adopted immediately following the 72-hour hold. That dog received all necessary vaccinations, microchipped, and was neutered. This has not only ensured the health and safety of that animal, but also directly supported the long-term goal, reducing overpopulation in our community. None of this would be possible without the generous support of donors. Their contributions have helped provide critical veterinary care, food, and supplies, ensuring that every dog receives the attention they deserve. As we continue this important work, we kindly ask for your continued support. Donations of any size make a difference and are deeply appreciated as we strive to give every animal the best possible chance at a healthy, happy future. I would also like to extend a sincere thank you to Scott Anderson for working so diligently to ensure all legal aspects and documentation were thoroughly handed, handled to make this agreement possible. His effort behind the scenes was essential in moving, moving this forward in the right way. This agreement is already making a difference, and I wanted to take a moment to say thank you. Your vote has had a real and immediate impact on the lives of these animals and the people who care about them. It's a success story and one that you helped make possible. Thank you for your continued support.
Rick Beveridge, apparently he knows, oh no, Rick Beveridge Kite Festival, I read my mind.
The great Karnak, right? Rick Beveridge, resident of Ocean Shores, I'm here to talk tonight about the kite festival. I know a lot of you probably don't know about it, until this year, the kite festival was roughly about 700, 800 yards north of the Best Western towards the casino. Despite that, last year, we start the kite festival off Friday evening at dusk with a lighted kite fly. Last year, we had over 300 people sitting in their cars, and you know people weren't there because they could see it flying from town because you can't see it from there. Hence, we moved it, we're going to be right off of Chance Alamir. The lighted kite fly is going to be the left side of the Chance beer approach this year. You will be able to see bit large lit kites from the IGA parking lot Friday evening, the 6th of June. And then all day Saturday, all day Sunday, there's free kids event, free kids kite making. There's demonstration flyers, we have a group called Quad Squad Northwest, they travel the world, they're a quad kite. Quad kites have four lines per kite, so you have sometimes 10 of these guys standing shoulder to shoulder on the beach, flying formations, so you've got 40 kite lines with people flying the same formations. If I was trying to do that, you'd have a big pile of broken kites and big wad of kite line in the beach. These guys are absolutely phenomenal. They spent, I think, about seven weeks in Europe already this year, doing demonstration flies in Europe. They're really amazing and they're really fun to go see, and it's all free. If you're a kite flyer, bring a kite, join us. It's not, it's not, you know, you don't have to be a member, you don't have to pay, it's free. And the other thing is, is this festival is all run by volunteers, we take We take no city money, no LTAC money, and it's all funded by the grace of the businesses in Ocean Shores that support the festival. Thank you.
And then I believe we have one online public comment, but it does not miss a topic. So Mary Schmicki.
Good evening, council members. My name's Mary Schmicki. I live in University Place, Washington, but I am an owner and now a board member of the Polynesian Condominium Motel and Resort. And I just wanted to say hi because I plan... I have just started listening to these meetings, and you don't know who's on Zoom, I don't think. And so I just wanted to let you know that we're there, that I'm there, and I'm excited about being more of a part of Ocean Shores. We are second-generation owners in the Polynesian. My grandparent... My husband's parents were original owners, and then I have a history with Ocean Shores as well. My parents had a lot down on one of the Duck Lakes when I was a little kid, and my uncle was chartered fishing out of the area, and we still had the marina. So I'm getting back to our roots a little bit, and I'm excited to be a part of this. And I wanted to thank you for all of your efforts and work on working with the hotels, motels, all of the different industry units there and trying to come up with some improvements that we can make. And so Polynesian's very excited about it. We have a new manager. We're on the right track, and we have our restaurant opening on the 6th of June. And I believe you probably were invited already to the tastings that are occurring those couple of days before. And so I'm just thankful for you being there and all the work that you do, and I'm excited that we can be a part of that.
That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you. Next, we go to staff reports, and we have a report by our city administrator, Scott Anderson.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and our general public. There's three things that I want to talk about tonight. Actually, two, but then I'll kind of audible one in there really quickly. And the first is our Southern Erosion Project. And as you might all know, that we had applied for brick grant funding through FEMA in order to finalize the construction of the berm that we were building at the south end of the city. That money was pulled from us, and we didn't really have a Plan B at that time because there was really no funding agency that would be able to come up with the kind of money that we needed. We, very much on a whim, at a very last-minute thing, applied for a grant through the House Appropriations Process through Emily Randall's office, our Congresswoman here that replaced Eric Kellmer. And she forwarded that, and we were very surprised because we literally only had a matter of weeks to pull it together. We did use all of our documentation that we used for the FEMA grant originally, but she has accepted that. We thought we'd actually been awarded the money at first, but no, no, it still has to be voted on in the appropriations process. But we're one of 15 things that have been forwarded to appropriations. So there is a possibility, this is a possibility, we could get up to $3.9 million, and that would be the height of it. But money that would be needed to complete the berm would actually be more than what we originally asked FEMA for. So just file that under potentially optimistic news, but it would be great. So thank you to Congresswoman Randall for putting that forward to us and for taking the time to read our documentation. There's a lot of work that was put into this by Marshall Reed and by Tim Hiles, our grant manager. And I can say I only did the final kind of review of it, but we weren't expecting much, so we're happy that moved forward. One thing I was not going to talk about tonight, but since the topic was just so good for death to Scotch broom, we actually, believe it or not, have a plan in the works that would not mitigate all Scotch broom in Ocean Shores, of course, but could help significantly reduce it. We are looking at buying biochar kilns that would do two things for us. One, it would help us with the fire break, where we could burn waste right on the side with the biochar kilns, but would also allow us to get rid of Scotch broom by using that. The problem is when you cut Scotch broom, you cannot transport it. This is a rule because it spreads the seeds, so they do not let us do that. But if we were to buy biochar kilns, we can burn it on the spot and turn it into biochar, and it could be a win-win potentially for the cost-benefit analysis. And of course, Tim walks in after I praised him. But so potentially, we could not only get rid of Scotch broom, but could sell that biochar to the community for fertilizer and other such things. So it is something that we have been discussing at length, especially with regards to the fire break. So that was the project that Jill Silver, I don't know if you remember that, from the 10,000-year institute, started down at the marina with the tribe. That's 25 acres of just pure Scotch broom. That's all it is. And it took us about a week to clear about an acre of that. So we know how much we have within the city, and we know obviously we won't be able to do it on private property, but as we move forward, we can do that. And then the last topic, not Scotch broom-related, but it obviously blew up over the course of this weekend, and which one person's already addressed, is the issue of the bathrooms. So I thought, I wish I'd had time to write out kind of the whole situation so I could explain it to people. The mayor and I have been very busy today. We went and met with all of our representatives at Greater Grace Harbor, and then we had a meeting with Adam Bernbaum at the Food Bank, so I wasn't able to like make the most inherent notes. But I will do what I can to inform everyone so that we all understand what's happening. So the bathrooms at Chancal Amir have been run by state parks for 25 years. They had a single individual at state parks whose by and large entire job was dedicated to doing that. After budget cuts that happened during this, as a result of the administration and things that happened through state parks, they're like, we can't do this anymore. So they've sort of just dumped it on the city. And we had the... Do we close it? Well, we can't obviously close it, so we've had to just take this over from them. We do not have a full-time person that's dedicated to do that, but I'll get to that more. In the winter, this was a very simple process. We kept two stalls open sort of at all times, but not in the evenings. So and there's a bunch of reasons for that. We've had a situation where the police unlock them and lock them every night, and the reason they're locked is multifold. People will live in them. We've had that problem already at the Lions Club, where people are sleeping and living in the bathrooms, the porta-potties that we put out there. People will do drugs and leave needles in them, and that is a danger to the general public. And then you will find disgusting things that you would never want to see in any bathroom. So it is a problem, and we all know that an upgrade is necessary. We've talked about just starting at the very basic of just like repainting it and making it look nicer. But if LTAC has worked in other cities to make nice bathrooms, that would be terrific. I've even looked at the models that they use in Europe, where they have automated flushing toilets that clean after every user. It's a fee, but it's a great service, and it automatically self-cleanss, but that's expensive. So that might be the kind of thing, if we were to look at LTAC, we'd look at that. So let's get back then quickly to this weekend. So this, so starting in the summer, we opened up to five stalls. And the reason it's five stalls is because we do not have... We have to use... We do not have Maintenance One workers that can clean those at the moment. And the only Maintenance One worker that we have does not work on Sundays, and we don't have it on holidays. So we've been limiting it to five stalls because people really... We don't have the staff to clean 10. We could turn around and hire someone that could do that full-time, and indeed, we are hiring another Maintenance One worker right now. We're in the process of that, that would help us clean it. And as of now, we're going to probably go to all 10 stalls for the remainder of summer. We have got a meeting about that in the morning. The other thing that we're going to look at is just putting automated locks on it that would help mitigate some of the problems that we've had, that we would... We'd simply, at 6:00 in the morning, they would open, and they would automatically lock at 10:00 at night, but the police would have to do one final round of checks to make sure that there aren't people living in there for all those health and safety reasons. As we've moved people out of the dunes that are camping in there, the very first place they go are the public restrooms. So it's not a real haul for them to get from one place to another, and it's just something that cities... I was talking to Lisa earlier today in Aberdeen, that they have to deal with, that people who don't have housing accommodation bathrooms, public bathrooms, becomes a place to do that. And here's how it works. So the police are locking and unlocking our bathrooms. Public Works is responsible for cleaning them. I will tell you that code enforcement, despite things on Facebook, plays no role whatsoever in bathrooms. And if code enforcement were to play a role in bathrooms, I'm not sure. I'd want to know what kind of role they're playing in that. So there's nothing to that. We will try to work out a system where we have more staff in cleaning that, but that's where we are for now. The whole idea is that we will probably put timed locks on it like we have in our other parks. But you're right, long-term, Mr. Dooley, who spoke earlier, is correct. We'd like to get that whole building renovated and revitalized. It's been sitting there in its current condition for decades now. So that's it.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Next, we've got council liaison reports and committee reports, and we'll start off with Denise.
Well, I participated in the city chat, and I attended the post-legislative session update today with mayor and city administrator, which was quite interesting since we had all six of our representatives there, three from each side. Quite informative. I also attended the finance committee. The finance committee, we basically looked at the overall finances. The major discussion was on the cost allocation plan, and I believe that cost allocation plan is now posted. We also looked at the cyclical revenue that we have, especially in terms of property taxes and hotel motel.
All right. Thanks. Tom.
I have nothing to add at this time.
All right. Lisa Gribble.
Thank you, ma'am. I attended agenda review and also was at the chat along with Allison and Denise.
All right. Lisa Scott.
I attended the agenda setting.
I signed warrants. I attended the finance committee meeting. I also attended the public safety committee meeting and participated in council chats.
Richard.
So I attended the agenda setting. I met with Mayor Eldwin on Monday, the 19th. I signed warrants on each of the preceding Fridays, although I was a silent participant in the city chat as a requirement of the Public Meetings Act. I carried the microphone around so that those who wanted to speak, we could all hear them. So that was my contribution too. And I attended the radio board meeting earlier today. The radio board discussed computer hardware problems and solutions that they have faced over the last few days. There was a discussion about the changing FCC rules, and there's, most important, an ongoing discussion with Vertical Bridge, who owns the red and white tower behind the IGA. There's a plan afoot, if the prices work right, to move the transmitter from the existing tower way north. I don't know exactly where it's at, but that's on top of a tall hill, and it's virtually inaccessible in inclement weather. Winds are blowing, trees come down, you don't want to be driving your car up there. So there's a plan, potential, to bring that transmitter to town at the IGA tower, which is actually owned by Verizon. If we do that, if the radio station does that, it will dramatically improve already pretty good reception for Ocean Shores areas. So that's what's happening with the radio board. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Rich.
There was a council of governments meeting on the 15th. The highlights, Aberdeen is, as we know, if we've driven through Aberdeen, working on the sidewalk improvements on Sumner Avenue. Kazi opened up their new municipal building. Apparently, the mayor said to mixed reviews from citizens, they're getting their fire museum up... Kazi's getting their fire museum up and running, working with engine company number one. Hoquam City Council approved a moratorium on transitional housing in response to the Moore Right Group buying the Econo Lodge, so they can get some regulations in place before they get too far down the road with no input from the city. Montesano's working on McBride sidewalk projects, and that will loop the city when it's done. They are opening their dog park by the end of summer. And July, they're going to have tours of their 6,000-acre forest for the public. Westport, working on their city website and obtaining new URLs. Their story's changed a little bit on their FEMA grant. They will now know by September if it's fully funded. Transit's working on a brand-new headquarters, relying on a state grant for funding. And Gray's Harbor County, they visited Grant County Jail, and apparently, it's the Taj Mahal of jails. They're really impressed with their architect. That seems to have magic when it comes to designing a jail with the least amount of expense in running it. So they are going to have an architect that specializes in jails come to Gray's Harbor, and they're going to have a meeting with the county commissioners at one of the upcoming county commissioner meetings. And that is all.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, Richard.
I forgot an item, if I may, and you may be going to cover it in your report about the radio board.
No. Go ahead.
So there's potentially two radio board vacancies coming vacant in July. If you're interested in being on the radio board, please submit your application.
All right. Thank you.
There is no mayor's report tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move on. We will recess this regular city council meeting at 7:05 and convene into a public hearing. This public hearing, before the city council, the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, to hear a public testimony for or against the proposed amendment of the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, 2025 to 2030, and this will be presented by our project manager, Becky Leach.
Good evening, everybody. So the STIP is due at the end of July, end of June, maybe. And this is the first year that we've brought it to council early enough that we'll be able to bring it back twice if we need to, which is awesome. Third time's a charm for me. This is my third year doing it. So what the STIP is, it's the State Transportation Improvement, and if we want to get federal funds of any kind for a transportation project, it has to be on this STIP report. So if there's anything that the public would like added, council has to approve it, but now is the time to say, hey, this would be a really cool thing to try to get a grant for in the future. And then if council approves it, I can add it. I can add it, get it in there, and then we could apply for a grant. This isn't state grant required, just federal grant required. But knowing what's out there project-wise that we possibly could do, some of the things on here is, we added last year a bridge to Westport for, you could just imagine, millions and millions of dollars. But things like that, it's... Some of them are pie in the sky. Some of them are projects that we have completed because we have gotten grants for them. Examples, the High Dune Trail and the Point Round Crosswalk was also on the STIP. So the grants do come in, and we do have a great grant manager and help from Scott to get those grants written. So with that, we can open it up to public comment.
Do we have any public comment? I don't see any. How about council? Any questions or comments? Yes. Denise.
Yeah, I have a comment because the High Dunes Trail, the expansion of it, came up in the council chat, and I just wanted to let the public know that on the STIP, we have both the expansion northward and also going south. The other thing that is also on the plan is taking care of the area of Chancal Amir and Ocean Shores Boulevard.
All right. Thank you for that. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you, Becky. We will close this public hearing and reconvene the regular city council meeting at 7:07. So we'll move on to old business. This is an ordinance for the city council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, repealing chapters 2.40, 2.48, 2.58, 2.60, 2.61, 2.62 of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code and Resolution Number 737, creating a new chapter, 2.44, citizens advisory boards and committees, and establishing an effective date for that. I spoke on this a little bit last meeting. This is the second reading, so I'm going to let Sarah comment. This is the second reading, so I'm going to let Sarah comment on that. She was not able to be at our last meeting.
Okay, so from what I hear, the last meeting went great. And they articulated the reason that we're trying to achieve this, and it's more of a streamlined than having 21 places for everybody to go when there is a border committee that they wanted to be a part of. We made some of the changes that the council had requested last time that were very, there wasn't much intent by them, but making it very clear and concise, under library, under attendance, those kind of little things. The only thing, and it was something that the council had brought up at the previous meeting, was LTAC and its membership. So LTAC and the Planning Commission have always been different. Planning Commission is guided by an RCW, and it speaks specifically to the concurrent terms. You can or cannot hold office as a Planning Commission member. And we have effectively done the same thing for LTAC members by resolution in the past. And this ordinance did not have that information in it. We would have still been reliant on that resolution. Since we're trying to get away from resolutions being what gives us that information, we would like to, after all the little changes, just like to do what Catherine Sprague used to call a friendly amendment. And the intent behind the amendment would be to add to section 2.44.250, which is specifically to LTAC, that members appointed under both sections A and B shall not serve two concurrent terms, more than two concurrent terms, outlined in section 2.44.140. So that would give somebody the ability to only do a max of four years, and then would have to take a break and then could go again. But they can't continue to be elected. Years and years ago, we had the same members over and over and over again. LTAC's different, as you know. They're regulated by RCW. They effectively, by RCW, make their recommendation to council. That recommendation makes or breaks an LTAC approval. So these ones have always been, in the past, done just a little bit differently with respect to their own RCWs. And then with that, we would also like to add in one exception under that 2.44.250. That section 2.44.2506, if you would give consensus to add that, the concurrent terms would not be for either the convention center manager and/or their designee. As you know, as a recipient, and because we have a public facilities district, we always have our convention center manager and/or, in this case, a designee on that board. And that's something, if the council can agree to the intent of it, it's easy to write that up, and I don't think it would negate us passing this tonight. And I think that that would put us to public comment.
All right. Public comment? Do we have any public comment on this? Seeing none, council? Yes, Richard?
At the last meeting, I voiced a concern about library trustees. I was able to research and found satisfaction, and I have no existing note, no heartache with what this ordinance says now. Thanks for the opportunity to check that.
Okay, Lisa Scott?
So you want us to potentially add another addition to this, then? If we're okay with taking the convention center manager off of LTAC?
No, not off. No, no, no.
Oh, always be on it. Okay. Sorry, I asked the mayor because I didn't quite hear you.
Sorry. So convention center, because we have a public facilities district, and under the RCW, it's two recipients and then two individuals that get the income, such as a hotelier or an Airbnb, something like that. We've always dedicated one position in our municipality because of that public facilities district, too. So we didn't want to box ourselves in and go, well, now what do we do? So that would be, and again, it's the intent. If you're okay with the intent, I have the way it would be written. And if there's nothing else, I don't think it holds us up.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I just would, I don't know if anybody else has a comment, but I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, repealing chapters 2.40, 2.48, 2.58, 2.60, 2.61, and 2.62 of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code and Resolution Number 737, creating a new chapter in the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Chapter 2.44, citizen advisory boards and committees, and establishing an effective date.
Second? Okay, we have a second. Did we want to consider Sarah's resolution?
You mean the addition?
Yeah, not the resolution, but the addition, sorry.
Yes, as presented by the finance director.
Okay. We got a second. Yes, Lisa Gribel?
So will we get it back to see what Sarah is adding? Or are we saying that we're okay passing it like this and then also adding things later?
The only thing I think is that George would be a perpetual, or not George, sorry, the convention center manager would be always on the LTAC committee. Or designee.
Correct.
That's the only change, that I trust that our finance director can make that without having it come back.
And the change isn't, this is just aligning with the resolution that we already have established. So it's just putting in this ordinance, so it is truthfully the one-stop shop, and it wasn't in here. So it's putting that verbiage in this ordinance.
Are you good with that, Lisa?
I was just trying to clarify what we were doing. But you'd mentioned something about like two terms, then take a break, and then you can come back. Are you adding that as well?
So how about I just read it, and you can say either it's a motion to approve and then a second? So it would be a motion to amend section 2.44.250, adding a number six. LTAC members appointed under sections 2.44.250B1A or 2.44.250B1B shall only serve two concurrent terms outlined in section 2.44.140. And then it would be a subsection A. With exception to section 2.44.2506, a concurrent term limit is in the seat held by Ocean Shores Convention Center or manager and/or designee.
All right.
Do you need another motion or just a motion?
To approve what I read.
To approve, my motion, original motion, was to include what the finance director has just read, as well as what's in front of us.
And I still second.
And we have a second, so. Counsel? Yes, Rich?
Just one other question for council members. Our page 23 of 109, it's under Membership Terms, Vacancies, and Removal, under A. I realize that in the past, we've had problems sometimes filling boards. But right here, it says now that at the end of a term, which is two years, that in the other boards, that there is not a limit. One could hypothetically be on a board for 20 years or 30 years or whatever. Are we good with that? Or do we want to address it and put a term limit of some reasonable amount, not four years? Now is our time to decide if we're good with letting it ride the way it's been, or if you want to put a 10-year term limit on it or something.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm actually good with letting it ride. It sometimes is really difficult to find volunteers for boards and committees, especially ones that really want to do the work and participate. So I don't know, I'm fine with letting it ride.
Richard?
I'd just like to point out, Sarah, I'm pretty sure said it, but I'd like to point out and remind everybody that the Planning Commission is an exception, and their term limits are set by RCW.
That's correct. All right, any other comments? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, now we're off to new business. We have a resolution of the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, presenting the revised and extended six-year transportation improvement program for the calendar years of 2026 and 2031, presented by our project manager, Becky Leach.
Hey, hello, council. I did double-check, it's June 30th when STIP is due. And like I said earlier, the six-year transportation improvement program is an annual update of proposed transportation projects over the next six years. In accordance with RCW 35.77.010, a public hearing was held prior to the adoption of the transportation program today. Adoption by revolution, resolution of the transportation program is statutorily required prior to June 30th, 2025. The resolution for adoption is provided for council discussion and consideration based on the information gained during the public hearing. And if council has any other projects that they would like to add or talk through removing anything that's on here.
All right, well, we'll go to public comment first.
Oh, we still do that? Okay.
Yeah. Any public comment out there? I see none, so okay, council. Any comments or questions for Becky? I don't see any.
Lisa does.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Thanks. Is there a reason on the High Dune Trail that we're, it says Chance to Pacific? Is there, should we say farther than that? Or are we, that's what my question was, for having it end at Pacific?
Which number is it on here? Just so I can find it faster.
Number three.
We talked about incorporating potentially part of the fire break with part of the High Dunes Trail, and so that was why we left it on here. But we can absolutely, it's probably a good idea to put it on here. Where are we to go for one of those federal grants? All the way down. I mean, that's my lifelong dream.
All right. Anybody else? Yes, Richard?
I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, presenting revised and extended six-year transportation improvement program for the calendar year 2026 through 2031.
Second?
As amended, I'm sorry.
As amended, yes. Can I clarify the verbiage? Are we as amended like to Sand Dune? As amended to?
As amended to the
East Ocean Shores Boulevard is the end of the city.
East Ocean Shores Boulevard down by the jetty. East Ocean Shores Boulevard. Be more professional.
Everybody clear on that? All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next here, number 12, a resolution of the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, adopting the December 2022 Gray's Harbor County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And that will be presented by our assistant fire chief, Mike Mandela.
Thank you. I'd like to first introduce Hannah Cleverly. Hannah is the deputy director of Gray's Harbor County Office of Emergency Management. And she has been an invaluable resource to the city and to myself as we wander through the myriad of plans and programs that have to be produced and renewed and edited every so often, three to five years. And so let me give you a little, the pathway, how we got here tonight. You've heard me in the past come to you and bring resolutions and ordinances and edits and everything else, and talk about the public safety committee meetings about our need to be a little more robust in forming our own internal plans. So in 2024, the council approved an interlocal agreement between the city of Ocean Shores and Gray's Harbor County Office of Emergency Management, which included, among many, many other things, the hazard mitigation plan was a product, a work product, that we brought forward for resolution in 2024 also. And that was a very large volume. And you can recall maybe the large six-inch tall binder that I brought here that has all the plans and an annex very specific to Ocean Shores, because our hazards that we need to mitigate are unique from many other cities in the county. Now we're here with another very, very large document. And if you looked at the link in your packet, it's 454 pages. It was too heavy to bring. So we're here tonight to ask council to approve a resolution to adopt this county comprehensive emergency management plan. And the reason for that is now the city has its own unique annex in that very large manual. The reason I talked through the pathway to get here tonight is because in combination with all the other visits I've made here to this audience, I'm trying to make the point that the city needs to continue to push forward, get our own individual response plans that tell us how police, fire, public works, and every other city employee is going to engage in assisting in mitigating whatever that emergency or disaster is. And so this is what you see now, I call a success, that has laid all the foundational groundwork to have the actual comprehensive plans countywide that now we fold into and then we pick and cherry pick off of to help us develop those very unique and specific plans.
You have anything to add? Do you have any questions? All right, do we have any public comment? I see none. Counsel, any questions or comments? Yes, Lisa?
I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, adopting the December 2022 Gray's Harbor County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Second?
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yes, thanks. All right, we've got a request of the city council of the city of Ocean Shores, Washington, to award the Southern Erosion Remnant Jetty contract to Moffett Nickel. And that will be presented by our project manager, Becky Leach, our lead planner, Marshall Reed, and our grant project management assistant, Tim Hiles.
Hello again. So we have a project, it's kind of more of a study, that's funded by CTP grant for $150,000, which I believe was Tim's first grant that he was awarded. And the scope of work includes site modeling, forecast impact, risk, risk assessment and potential impact, and long-term mitigation alternatives for the southern erosion. The city plans to share this study with the U.S. Army. Sorry, I'm out of breath because I ran to get paper towels. We're going to share this study with the U.S. Corps of Army Engineers in hopes that they will partner with us for a more permanent solution at the southern end, specifically the Remnant Jetty. So that is our plan for this. And we sent out an RFQ. Moffett Nickel was the firm that we selected. And their proposal is $150,000, and the budget of the grant is $155,000.
All right, and this study is so we can hopefully talk to Core into rebuilding the Remnant Jetty, which would take care of all of our erosion problems there at the south end. So something that we needed to do, and Tim did a great job getting us that awarded grant. Does anybody else want to chime in? Marshall?
Yeah, I guess I'll throw two cents in here. So Moffett Nickel, not to be confused with the firm that we've currently got working down there on the berm, does have two of the old engineers, the coastal engineers that work with us in the original study, Abbie Gertz and Aaron Porter. And they've got a depth and a breadth. Abby Gertz and Aaron Porter. And they've got a, a depth and a breadth of the issues that we've been dealing with down there that, that made them like the perfect team for going through this analysis. They have great relationships with the Army Corps of Engineer, engineering staff, and so they communicate with them really well, and they've been doing so on a long-term basis. They also have inroads with the Department of Ecology that are going to be, you know, intimately required for permitting on, on any projects that would come out of this study. And through Moffett Nickel and their connections with the COR, we've kind of gained some inroads with a couple of the folks at the COR, and I got an email from them this morning, because I poke them about once or twice a month trying to, you know, get them to deliver some rock out here for us and rebuild that relic jetty. And, and they actually provided some information this morning that, that gives a couple of options for using COR funds to, to finance erosion control measures and stuff like that, that may be related to the navigational channels. So that's something new that I just got today, and this report or this study that we're doing would provide the cost benefit analysis or the reasons why we could make a request and the supporting documentation that would go into those kind of applications. So we're, we're hoping if we can get this over the finish line, that we'll have good justification for the COR to participate and contribute to what we're dealing with out there.
Very good. Do we have any public comment on that? I don't see any. Counsel? Yes, Lisa Scott.
So Marshall, how hard is it going to be? I mean, the study's the first step. How hard do you think it's going to be to get the COR to put this in their budget? And will it be one of those things, do you think, that will be reminiscent of the, of the main jetty and being on their maintenance list?
Well, that, that would be my dream.
Yeah.
To, to have this thing just rolled into a, a part of the, the maintenance. The programs that the engineering group sent me this morning were $10 million allotments for long-term erosion control. So if we do this over, you know, do this sections over periods of time or whatever, one of our current engineering tasks is, is looking at and quantifying the, the medium-term measure that we're looking at, which is probably going to be an expansion of the existing cobble berm.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we can, you know, if Tim's successful with this grant, get it through the federal appropriations, then we'll try to get the, the COR in with these, and the limits on the programs that we're looking at are $10 million per, per instance. So if we can start, you know, shoving those in there and do a, a portion a year or something like that, while we still continue to push the COR for, you know, accepting responsibility for the jetty. And I've got some anecdotal evidence from one of the other coastal engineers that we're working with, that the rate of erosion that we're experiencing in the Ojai Hut Bay has accelerated since the deeper draft project went into effect here eight or 10 years ago when they started the, the deeper draft project. So with all those things in there, I think, you know, we're, we're hoping that this will force them into a partnership with the city, and we'll get some, some long-term measures taken care of on that shoreline down there.
Do you have the port wrapped into some of those conversations too? Because they're, they could be a big help when it comes to, with the Army Corps in trying to lobby and get into their budget as well. So it's more of a maintenance thing?
Yeah, we, we have, we continue to reach out to the port, but as you saw in their presentation tonight, they're pretty well wrapped up in the beans right now. So I just kind of, you know, shoot them an email once in a while, let them know what, what we've got going, invite them out if they've got time, or to meetings that we get together with other agencies. And, and I, I think as we get farther into this, they'll probably engage a little bit more. That would be my expectation. Yep.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? Yes, Allison?
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve a request of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores to award the Southern Erosion Remnant Jetty Analysis Contract to Moffett Nickel.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Great, great work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. No need to go anywhere, Becky. We have a request for the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, for a wastewater collection division to purchase a sewer mainline inspection camera. And that's presented by Becky Leach and also our wastewater collection crew chief, Nick Tingle.
Nick spent a lot of time researching some different cameras. So the wastewater collections department would like to purchase an iris crawler camera to be able to inspect the sewer mainlines in the city. Currently, we do not have a camera to see the condition of the sewer lines, particularly the gravity concrete mainlines. We reached out to contractors to have them give us prices, and we were not able to find anybody that would do the work for us. So then we reached out to SCJ Alliance, who is our contracted city engineer, and they found one, one contractor that would do it for us, but the cost would be just under the amount of the cost of the camera that Nick found. As of right now, the city does not have a real maintenance program for the uptown gravity section, other than manhole inspections and repairs when sinkholes happen from eroding pipes caused by H2S gases. The camera would allow the collections department an opportunity to build a preventative maintenance schedule to prevent future sewer issues and failures, and maintain these mainlines like they do for the vacuum system side of the sewer system. Just to point to, the main lines that we're talking about were not replaced as part of the lid that we had. That was a question that I had been asked. These are old, original lines in the north end of town. And Nick found three different cameras, prices all the way from, this one is $52,377.23 after taxes and shipping, up to $140,000. So, and we've had lots of conversations about, they're such a big spread. Is this one sufficient? Is it just good enough? Is it going to get us through as long as we need? Is it going to do everything that we need? And Nick is confident that he found the right camera for the job.
All right. Public comment? Do we have anybody that wants to get up there and talk? Okay. Anyway, counsel. Yes, Lisa?
So just more of a comment than anything. I know how extremely important it is to have a camera, especially for your lines, and I just can't believe we don't. It's utterly amazing considering how much our soils move, our sand, and I just, wow, I am in huge support of this. This is necessary.
All right, thanks. Yes, Denise, and then Lisa Grebel.
Yeah, I have a question. Where are the old, original lines? And how far do they extend within the town?
So it's basically from J.K. Lewis, Ace Hardware, if you were to go east to East Rain there. That starts the gravity section, and then all of, like Polynesian, all the way up to Short Cuddy Court, Damon Road there that we take in. So it's quite a big section of the north area that we have.
All right, thanks. Lisa Grebel?
Thank you. Is there training that goes along with it, or is it something that's pretty intuitive, or do you have to get trained?
Yes. So if you were to agree to purchase this camera, the company would actually come here and train the people or individuals how to use it, and there would only be a certain set amount of individuals that would actually use this camera. So it gets taken care of properly and maintained properly, so it will last a very long time.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? Yes, Richard?
Please refresh my memory, but the, the concrete line that's under Ojai Hut Creek, that has all been taken care of already. Is that correct, Becky? Or is that part of this? Okay.
That is part of the gravity section. That is part of our, that is where we take on the casino and state parks, the outside, and everything basically meets in the uptown area. Half of it goes down the Menard Creek line to our pump station there on J.K. Lewis.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Lisa Scott?
I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion or request to the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores for the Wastewater Collections Division to purchase a sewer mainline inspection camera.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, next we have a request to the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores to approve the purchase of a 2025 Trail King tilt trailer from Pape Machinery, and that's under our Sourcewell contract number TK92922. This, this is going to be presented by Sarah Logan.
So the Public Works Department as a whole uses this piece of equipment to transport not only our big, huge concrete barriers that are utilized down now at the southern erosion area, but also the Convention Center for Hogwild or any street closures, but they also use it to move the heavy equipment around the city in the event that they need to drive it farther, or it breaks down somewhere and they need to go pick it up. They had a, a issue where they drove one of our sewer vehicles, and hopefully Nick's not behind me looking and saying, what are you doing? But that, that piece of equipment had broke down. We didn't even have our own equipment because our previous one had broke to a capacity that it could not be fixed. So we had to, like, call a friend, call a favor, and it's just not feasible anymore. They did have a local business owner that was able to help them for a short period, but due to the liability on their insurance plan, they could no longer help us. So we're at this kind of crossroad where we need to get this piece of equipment. Alex Iverson, our street department lead, reached out to see if it was available immediately, and it is, because there was no point if this, at this very moment, if it was going to be a three to four months out, it wasn't going to help us in this huge time of need. The Public Works Department works really good together on utilizing one another's equipment, and kind of when the cost burden comes, they share that burden with one another. The biggest cost would be to the storm utility fund, which has more than enough money, as we've discussed, and that would be about 30, 30,000 of the 61,000. And then, as you can see in your agenda bill, with exception to the sewer, everyone else is kind of taking a $5,000 hit, and it's, and it's broken down six ways. So this is a piece of equipment that keeps them moving, whether it's a broken down other piece of equipment. It's moving things, concrete barriers. We're at a crossroad of not being able to do that without this. It wasn't budgeted, but their budgets effectively have the money to take on this burden.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? Yes?
Hi, I'm Anne Race. I live here in Ocean Shores. My question has actually been answered with the presentation, but I want to make my comment anyway. When I went through the agenda and the attachments, nothing in there said who this trailer was for. And the fact that it was being presented by finance made me question who it was for and who's going to be responsible for it. So my question's been answered. I just wanted to point out that it wasn't there for us to read going through the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
I was just wondering who did the research and if other trailers were looked into. I have some background in this area, and so was just looking to how we came about Pape and that equipment, because I know we have some local here in Washington that could provide the same.
All right. You want to answer that, Sarah?
If we're done with public comment.
Yeah. Well, anybody else for public comment? All right, we're done.
So because we're a government agency, we have to do our purchasing practices, which require us to do the bid practices, and so that goes into the quotes. And then there's also, because we're a government agency, there's territorial, like that's a real word that they used with us, where, where this is my territory and only I can sell these things in this territory. And Rich is nodding, so I think I'm doing the right thing. But anyway, the reason that we went with Pape specifically is because Pape is backed by a state contract. So in Washington State, they've gone through the appropriate bidding process for this type of trailer specifically. So Pape has, and, and the people that are in the Sourcewell contract with just this Trail King, Trail King has, through Pape, the territorial requirements to sell that piece of equipment. I had to learn that. I actually did know that part. They did, I will say to you that they, they did do due diligence. When it's the Sourcewell contract, it's not just the bidding practices that they do. When you go through a state or a piggyback on a state contract, there's a percentage discount on that piece of equipment for us. Like, if you went and bought that piece of equipment because you're a millionaire and you want to have a tilt trailer, you would pay way more. We got 15% discount for going on a piggyback state contract under the territorial Tiger King, I think it said. So.
All right, thank you. Comments or questions from council?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, a request to the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, to approve the purchase of a 2025 Trail King tilt trailer, try saying that fast five times, from Pape Machinery, Inc., under the Sourcewell contract, TK92922.
Second. All right, we have a second. Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have no discussion tonight, no executive session. Agenda review will be council member Scott, Taylor, and Sires. And now we have, for the good, good of the order, and so we'll start at the other end. Rich?
I have nothing this evening.
All right, Richard?
Nothing.
Lisa?
I just wanted to say one thing. So the restrooms, just in particular, because that was an interesting conversation. And I, for one, I, I know a lot of people rely on Facebook for information, but it would be so nice if people have questions or comments that they actually send an email, you know, call into city and get correct information because so many false rumors are spread, and it makes our community look so bad when people are relying on information. And I'm a firm believer, if you didn't see it, and, you know, believe none of what you see and only half of what you hear, and that particularly is true for this town. And we can be our own worst enemies on how we talk about ourselves. And just remember that before you hop on the keyboard and comment or use your phone, just remember, you know, people are connected to that. The city works really, really hard, and, you know, there's usually a reason for something. But the comments got to be pretty nasty, and just remember that.
All right. Allison, good of the order.
I just want to thank everybody that came out for council chats. It's the first time I've had the opportunity to participate, and I really loved the discussion we had, and I look forward to doing more.
All right, thanks. Lisa Grebel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, also like to thank those that came out to the council chat. That was great. And thank you for the presentation from the Engagement Committee. I appreciate the work that you're doing to provide activities for all community members to participate in. And what a great weekend, Memorial Weekend. I think it was the start of boating season, and I just wanted to say thanks to our police department. I saw the police boat out several times, and I love how visible the police department is out on the water promoting boating safety and enforcing boating safety. So thank you.
All right, thanks. Tom?
I have nothing today.
All right. Denise?
I also wanted to say thank you to the Community Engagement Committee, and I look forward to the, the market this year. Thanks to the port for their presentation. I wanted to encourage people, if you have not taken one of the tours of the port, do so. You get behind the scenes. You get to go in secure areas on a special little bus. It's definitely worthwhile. Also, thanks for getting the, the flapping nets at the golf course fixed. I walk there every day, and it is sure nice not to see them in the wind. So they look quite nice now. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Can we get an adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.